In the prior year, according to NPD Bookscan. Peter Strauss of RCW is his agent.
So he was known, but not hugely known.
Since winning the Nobel, Gurna, who was born in Zanzibar and now lives in England, has sold over 26,000 copies here. And Strauss says his 10 books went from being available in just a few countries to over 40.
And there was a huge body of work, and the publishers embraced that.
The Nobel effect is apparent for other authors, too, even if they don't win in literature. Daniel Kahneman won the prize in economics in 2002. Cambridge University Press had published several of Kahneman's books before that. Editor Stephen Asara says sales jumped immediately in the first year and have remained high.
I would say, though, at the same time, you know, it wasn't like it jumped to the top of the New York Times bestseller list. These are pretty academic specialist books.
As Sarah points out, the prize also comes with other benefits, like increased awareness of the field of work. I'm Stephanie Hughes from Marketplace.
And the Nobel Prize in Economics, by the way, comes out on Monday. Stay tuned for that. Let's do the numbers. Wall Street is looking to open essentially flat, an improvement from earlier when indexes were down in pre-market trading. Nasdaq futures are pointing up slightly, two tenths percent. Overseas European and Asian markets mostly are in the red. The FTSE in London is down eight tenths percent.
Marketplace Morning Report is supported by UKG with HR and workforce management solutions designed to make employees happy. When employees feel supported, a business becomes more than a place of work. It becomes a work of art. UKG, our purpose is people. And by Avalara. Business owners have worries. Automating sales tax with Avalara helps get rid of them. Learn how Avalara can help take the worry out of tax compliance at avalara.com.
There's a Netflix film out about a shadowy payments company which collapses as reporters dig into its accounting practices. Sounds like a great thriller, except that it's a documentary about the now-defunct German firm Wirecard, which was one of the most valuable companies on the Frankfurt Stock Exchange. Investigative reporter at the center of the story is Dan McCrum of the Financial Times. He spoke with David Brancaccio.
For those unfamiliar here in the U.S., what can we call Wirecard? Is it like PayPal but based in Europe or something?
That's pretty much it. It was a big, successful technology company, which had something to do with moving money around and credit card payments.
So you and your team found evidence of shenanigans, corruption, and fraud, big time. Give us a taste.
Shenanigans is putting it lightly. I started to look into it, and I thought its numbers didn't really add up. It looked a bit fraudy, shall we say. And the strange thing was, the more I dug, the stranger and more bizarre the story gets. So I think I'm looking into a company, but then private detectives are following people around. Hackers are trying to break into our email. And we start to realize Russian spies are maybe hanging out with the guys who were running the company.
Ooh. Now, I want to understand this a little better. You start reporting on this, but you start spotting the signs that somebody, maybe the company, is spying on you?
I start writing these stories, saying, "I'm not sure about this company's accounts." Things start to heat up, and we start to discover that there's this team of 30 private detectives who are running around London trying to get photos of our sources, you know, talking to journalists, colluding to try and bring down this big technology company. And it's kind of like, I don't know if you're familiar with the Theranos story, but it's a bit like that, just on steroids.
Yeah, and there are echoes of Enron, but I don't think they had any of the Wall Street Journal guys followed who were working on that story. But you're saying there was more, that it becomes an official investigation into your team and the paper. Police get involved?
Yes, it was this very large German company. And we start publishing stories, saying, "There's fraud happening inside here." And what the German government does is step in to protect the company. They ban speculation in the shares, and then they start investigating me and my colleagues for market manipulation. They're convinced we've been leaking our stories to speculators so they can use them to profit.
And you're not.
No, I should say very clearly, no, we're not. They're rather embarrassed about that whole thing now.
Dan McCrum, investigative reporter at the Financial Times, and his work is a key ingredient for the new Netflix documentary called Scandal, spelled with a K the German way. Dan, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me on.
And thanks to David Brancaccio for that interview. I'm Novosavo with the Marketplace Morning Report. From APM, American Public Media.
Put my glasses on. The October 6, 2022 City Council informal session is hereby called to order, and I will ask our clerk to please call over our clerk, who is Ms. Suzie McCourt.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Here.
Mr. Beszbitz.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And a call, Mr. President. Just to advise everyone again that council meetings will be televised live and replayed on RVTV Channel 3 on Thursdays at 7:00 PM and Saturdays from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and video streamed through Facebook Live at facebook.com/WorldOVA. Council meetings are offered with closed captioning for the deaf or hard of hearing. And we're delighted this morning to have with us Deputy City Manager, Ms. Clarence Greer, who will be serving in lieu of Ms. Cowell. All right, items for action this morning is a communication from my office requesting the council convene in a closed meeting to discuss vacancies on certain authorities, boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council pursuant to Section 2.2-3711 Code of Virginia as amended. And you all have a list of current vacancies, which is included with the agenda for this meeting. All right, I need a motion.
So move.
A second.
Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Cobb.
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Aye.
Ms. Price.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Whiteboyd.
Aye.
And Mr. Beszbitz.
Aye.
And Mayor Lee.
Aye. And the motion passes. Thank you. All right, then, I don't list it on the 2:00 PM council document requiring some discussion, clarification, or any additions, deletions. All right, hurry now. Are there any topics for discussion by the mayor or members of council briefing? All right, hurry now. Our legislative committee meeting scheduled for 9:00 AM in the council chamber today, and I'm going to call on Councilman Bill Beszbitz, our chairman, to guide us through our legislative committee meeting. Mr. Beszbitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and again, thank all of you for being here. I'm happy that Mr. Kathy is able to join us virtually, and I know his schedule is tight today. So if you look at the agenda, I'm going to ask that we move Roman numeral three, item C, up to the beginning. So we'll, in other words, we'll cover the education items first, because he may not be able to remain with us through the whole thing. Also, very happy to welcome Ron Jordan, Laura Bateman, and Kathy Bercher. Appreciate y'all being with us. I hope you're keeping everybody straight down there in the holy city. That's, yeah, that's where I'll have to... So let's, what I'm suggesting, if you go to, it's page 17 of the electronic version, but it's a page that looks like this. It starts at the top, RCPS, key positions and legislative priorities. I'm suggesting that we take that, that first section there, sorry, yeah, that we take that part and make that our policy statement, instead of the policy statement that we have now. And then, as you'll notice, what I've done is sort of rearranged things a little bit on our legislative priorities and divided it into sections. Section A is health and safety. Section B is local government. And we can add all of their specific requests for legislation as section C under the priorities, understanding that they may also work with Advanus and others to present this third package independently of whatever we're doing. So we'll try to keep each other informed, but we'll all be working on this. So are there any questions from any of the committee members about anything in the education packet as Dr. Seabert has supplied to us? And again, I should say the draft education packet, because all of this is still in draft form, and none of it will be finalized until our meeting next month. So any questions about any of those? Frankly, I thought they were very well put together and very well explained in terms of why they are important and so forth. Some of them, I actually, I was a little bit surprised to see that the code section, for example, doesn't specifically identify certain items as weapons that we commonly would think of as weapons and that we certainly would not want any of our students bringing to school with them. So, and there are a couple of others like that, like, really? The code doesn't already say this? So I appreciate the fact that they identified those things. I apologize. We need to do a roll call over the committee. I'm getting way ahead of myself.
That's okay. Mayor Lee.
Here.
Mr. Beszbitz.
Here.
Ms. Whiteboyd.
Here.
Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Price.
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Dr. Jamison.
Here.
Mr. Kathy.
I'm sorry, I was muted. I'm here. Thank you.
We have no sound from him.
Well, that's our...
Yeah, but...
So, again, I'm especially pleased that we have all...
Yeah, thank you.
...of the members of our committee with us this morning. I know that's not always easy to fit into our schedules. We're all very busy people. So going back to the questions about the education priority items, which is the request for specific amendments to different sections of the code.
What are the specifics?
Yes, sir. Mr. Cobb.
Thank you, Mr. Beszbitz. Mr. Seabert, on the very first section, under school safety and security, there's, I appreciate the addition here of the recommendation regarding allowing access to firearms by children and penalty. I think my question is a bigger question, which isn't solely the responsibility of the schools. But it's a question of what ability, what authority we have, or what the General Assembly could do to address the kind of unfettered access to guns by juveniles. I mean, we, I don't have hard data on this, but I hear story after story after story of juveniles who have access to weapons in our community. And it may be that they're being provided them by people who legally own guns, but in many cases, that's probably not the case. And so I'm curious to counsel and how we might address that or include that. And I'm certainly willing to do some research onto how we might add that to our agenda. But I raise it because I appreciate you putting it in here. Well, good morning, and Chair Beszbitz, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Had the opportunity to actually review these again this morning with Superintendent White. She had multiple conflicts this morning. But this particular item, and Mr. Cobb, back to Mr. Beszbitz's comments about the legislative package as a whole, and Mr. Cobb's point about this particular topic, we are all pulling on the same rope. We are all trying to move our city and forward and safeguard young people and the families that particularly we serve in the school division. That, this particular agenda, this particular legislative patch came from the multiple town halls and feedback sessions that Superintendent White and the board had, and just feedback last spring in particular, where parents were supportive of the efforts the school district had made and the communications the school division had made. But they were like, what is the consequences for the adults who are not securing these weapons, especially from younger children? And so the hurdle we encountered there was the term recklessly. That was the first part of that bill. That is, you know, I'm not an attorney, we have attorneys in the room, but that's apparently a very high legal standard of proving that an individual, an adult recklessly left a firearm available. And so we wanted to strike that word recklessly to get to a more reasonable standard, to expect that you secure your guns, especially from younger children. So that was the, that was the feedback from the community, which was like, thank you, schools for communicating. We appreciate what you're doing, but what are you doing about these adults who aren't taking care of their belongings? And so that was the origin of that item. Thank you.
Is that good, Mr. Cobb?
Yeah.
Anything else on the education? Ms. Price.
Oh, thank you. It's good to see you this morning as well. I, too, am glad to see that the language is being tightened up, because certainly we do need to hold adults accountable. I was wondering if you could address the section on teacher shortage and kind of just elaborate on that a little bit more? That's, looks like a good attempt to address the teacher shortage by looking at retirees. So if you could just explain that a little bit more and maybe perhaps pinpoint what was the hindrance against retirees coming back?
Happy to do so, Ms. Price. And also, I'd invite Chair and Mr. Kathy to jump in at any point in time. Teacher recruitment shortage is a complex problem, and we got to keep lots of faucets putting into the bucket, and we got to stop the leaks. So there's a whole, it's big. One of the bigger factors here, you see, is that although we're certainly thankful for the investment made in teacher salaries, and so we made a market adjustment for teacher compensation in Roxy Public Schools, which has been appreciated and successful, when you control for inflation, a teacher today is earning $1,600 less than they were 15 years ago in terms of buying power. So we definitely, there's many factors. It's more than compensation, but that remains a big, big job. But in terms of the shortage, there's an interesting issue with the Virginia retirement system. VRS has different, what's called, break in service requirements. So one of them is that if I'm a teacher and I retire at the end of June, I have to have a separation of service of a month before I can substitute. And that one month would be the month of September, so now we're in October. So a teacher who retired last year can now become a substitute because they've had a separation of service. But there's also a law about critical shortage areas. And the critical shortage law has a sunset clause in it, and it addresses different teacher licensure areas. It also addresses school bus drivers. And what it says is that for you to come back and serve and not lose your retirement, you have to have not performed any function for 12 months. And the problem with this is that our best retiree people are still engaged. They are substituting. They are driving the bus occasionally. They are substituting in the classroom. They know what's going on, but because they have been substituting, they are not eligible to come back full-time. So that leaves us with having to do like the less than 80% of the time. And that's very disruptive for a retired teacher to be in the classroom four days a week instead of five. So that, so we, the one-month separation of service to do something versus the one-year separation of service to come back, we just think that's too great. VRS is concerned about that. VRS argument in years bypasses it, like, oh, this is going to lead to teacher retirement. It's going to incentivize retirement. The incentivized in teacher retirement is already there. We need, we need trained, qualified people in the classrooms.
Wow. Thank you. I'll be quite honest with you, I didn't realize it was that specific. So hopefully, this can help to alleviate that particular dilemma, because I do know several folks who would have said, yes, I would love to be able to come back, however, because of VRS, that the restrictions are... Hey, tell the clinic... Oh, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Ms. Price, I will say I was in Richmond yesterday with some other organizations and people who do my work in other school districts, and this is one that has considerable interest. Again, we'll see what, how it gets through VRS.
So in your pointing that out, does that mean other jurisdictions are also kind of lobbying for...
Yeah, this is actually, I expect this will be one picked up by like the state superintendent's organization as one of their legislative priorities.
Excellent. All right. Great. Thank you.
I would just add, from our perspective, this is an ongoing, very localized problem in all of these jurisdictions. Our substitute situation is a crisis.
Absolutely.
Well, I think we've certainly experienced that in many of our departments in the city, and I think employers all over the area, probably all around the country, are having difficulty filling all the positions. So anything that gets in the way of that really is something that should be addressed. So I think that is very important. If there's nothing further, I wanted to ask you, Dr. Seabert, before you get away, after the section on paid work-based learning experiences supporting English learners, we have a couple of sections that I think are still in the draft stage as far as what I've received, the K-12 education funding, control for inflation. That's something that you still have to plug some numbers or whatever into before it's finalized? Is that where we stand with that one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, kudos to the city and the school board for really moving earlier and being very proactive in terms of legislative work. But a lot of things, this is you all have your VML conference and things that you get information at. A lot of our information comes from the superintendent's conference, which is actually Halloween, and the school board conference, which is like the second week of November. And so there are a lot of things that will come from that. But in particular, the data you refer to is from Jim Regenball, Fiscal Analytics and Independent Group, really, really expert. And of course, he works with VML and BACO and others. And so he usually gives a couple of updates. He's given me a chart update. But in the meantime, we are thinking that in terms of school, the funding piece, what has come from our own CFO, Kathleen Jackson, about the inflation-controlled buying power for teachers over 15 years going down by $1,600, that we will probably be able to run with that piece with or without an update here.
Well, if you can get us whatever you're able to do before our meeting on November 7, but then if some of those things are happening after that date, we can always come back at our meeting on the 21st and amend, because we need to prove, we need to have a resolution approving this, but we can amend that on 21st if we need to do that or anything related to the school system. And then finally, the next section is support staff cap, state responsibility versus local burden. That was addressed earlier in another item. Is this still something else that should be added to that, or is that part of what we...
That was a, that was a good example last year. Now, the support staff cap was rolled back partially. In the meeting I was in yesterday, we're excited that there might even be some in the Virginia Senate interested in completely eliminating it, because it is a vestige from the Great Recession. And what that really has done is it is, the localities have been shouldering the state burden now for over a decade, and so we'd like to see that fully eliminated. And so we'll need to update that data. Last year, they did roll back part of it. We'd like to see a complete elimination of support staff cap.
So those two sections will still be part of what you're going to have...
Yes. I'm a chairman, I do, again, it'll be up to the board, but we, we had not anticipated the board adopting their positions until the school board meeting in November, which is like the 14th of November. We certainly will have an update before then, but it would still likely be draft.
That's fine. We'll, I don't know, is there any reason why we can't have our meeting on the 7th as a committee and then present it to city council on the 21st? Is that...
That can be done.
Yeah, so if you can get it to us before the 21st of November, then we'll have it in final form to vote on that day. If there's nothing further, just wanted to ask if Dr. Jamison or Mr. Kathy have any further comments they would like to make?
No, I think that's, I think, I think we're so pleased that Dr. Seabert is assisting with our efforts, all right, please. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Kathy is giving a thumbs up on that, that we're good, we're good to go. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we didn't overlook the opportunity for you to say anything that you might want to.
I'm making sure the next meeting is on my calendar.
A big pardon?
I'm just making sure the next meeting is on my calendar.
Yeah, that's always tricky. Okay. We'll go back then to the legislative priorities, which is the very beginning. And let me, before I forget, to share with you that the staff, we received six recommendations from staff, as you recall. One of them had to do with sustainability and setting the minimum standards for energy, those sorts of things. And they have decided that they're really not ready to move forward with that. They need to do some more work and analyze that a little better and perhaps come back next year with the legislative request. So that one is gone. I was, I had a hard time getting the one about advertising, requirement to advertise in newspapers. I was trying to get the Word document version of that so I could cut and paste it into our, and I finally just typed it in myself. So that one's in there. But I wanted to explain, the other four, Delegate Rasool has agreed to submit all four of those for drafting, as you see in the green type under some of these items, where I've just tried to include some comments about what the status is. So he's agreed to draft all four of those, and two of them, he's going to definitely introduce. One is on the smoke alarms and whatever the other one is, but you have it there if you look down through. So as I said, I separated these into health and safety. I think there's agreement that we continue with everything that we have in there at this point. Then the second, well, hang on a second. Let me get down there. On item six, excuse me, item seven, number two, I had a question about, it says, any felony if the person has been convicted of two or more offenses described in subdivision one or two. I wasn't sure what subdivision of what code section that was, and I've gotten that, it's So I'll put that in there. And then on the next page, I got a little clarification on the one, first one under parentheses three, the first bullet there about amending section 19.2-56B. Some of that wording, I thought, wasn't quite clear, and they've clarified that. But I just wanted to be sure. What it says is, you're now allowed to serve a warrant between 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, and they want to change that to 8:00 AM to 6:00 AM? Or is that supposed to be 6:00? Or is that supposed to be 6:00 PM?
I believe that's going to be 10:00 PM.
10:00 PM?
10:00 PM.
8:00 AM to?
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay.
Would be the new timeframe. Does that understand? Am I correct?
Is that, Mr. Barber, is that your understanding?
The way it's written, Your Honor, was the...
Come on, come on to the, come on up to the mic if you would.
Your Honor, the way we wrote it was...
The way we wrote it, Your Honor, was six, to just simply move the 8:00 AM.
We aren't in court.
It's all good.
My apologies.
Mr. Spencer, continue.
Mr. Bestbitch, it was, the, as written, it was simply to move the 8:00 AM up to 6:00 AM and keep the 5:00 PM stop time. And again, this came from the, obviously, the police department, but it was part of the Virginia Association Chiefs of Police. It was their recommendation. We just basically inserted it. And so we're following their recommendation.
The way I read that, though, is that you could start anytime after 8 o'clock or at 8 o'clock, you could start and go all the way through the night until 6:00 AM the next morning, and the only times you couldn't serve the warrant would be between 6:00 AM and 8:00 AM.
Well, then I need to apologize again for poor drafting. Currently, the statute says you can start at 8:00 AM and you got to stop at 5:00 PM.
Right.
And so the change was only to the start time. So starting earlier, but still stopping at 5?
6:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Only, only 5:00 PM, Your Honor. Your, Mr. Bestbitch, sorry.
6:00 AM to 5:00 PM, only starting two hours earlier.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll, I'll look at that. Let's try to remember how to draft that, but I might, I might have to get back to you on that one. But thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm just scrolling down through here. I, I think, I guess what I want to know for sure, since nobody told me otherwise, is everyone in agreement that we should keep this request for the charter change in there, even though we know pretty well that it's probably not going to go anywhere again? Yeah. Well, do we actually know that, Chairman? I mean, we can go back at it then. We had, I didn't know, I didn't see a lot of support for it. I think we need to emphasize through our local legislative, again, that if we want to come back, I think going back at it, including it in there is something that we really want to do. Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that. I just want to make sure that everybody is, is...
I think so. I think they will have an opportunity to caucus this time and be prepared to argue for us. I don't think they were present the last time, neither one of them. So this might be a little bit different, Mr. Bestbitch.
Okay, we'll...
If so, then I will have a request for a public hearing at our next council meeting with the idea that we will hold that public hearing first meeting in November, if that's all right.
Good, thank you. So since he's here, let me ask Mr. Pretty if he would come up to the microphone and, and answer one question. And I know they're still reviewing all the things that the police department, all the requests from the police department and those things. But I wanted to ask you on number 12 on our priority list, which is the last one, do you know if, if Senator Edwards intends to introduce legislation again to make the VMT official state agency?
He has expressed interest, but he has not committed to any of his bills yet. Yeah. My understanding is that the museum is going to look at retaining lobbyists themselves to hopefully make this more successful this year.
Okay, so, so we still think that's something that should happen, I guess.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So we'll, we'll leave it in there, is it? I just thought if he decided that was not worth pursuing, then we, we might not need to keep that. But we will keep it in there, all right? I mean, I certainly agree that that, that makes a lot of sense.
Any other questions?
Not, not at this time, but thank you. Appreciate you being with us. Moving to the policy statements, the first one under fiscal policy about tax reform, Advantage Strategies has recommended a proactive policy statement such as, "The city of Roanoke relies on several revenue sources to support services closest to the people. Therefore, any change to the B-pole and M&amp;T taxes, as well as the local sales tax on food for human consumption and personal hygiene products, must take into account and replace these essential local revenues." I, I think that does put it into more proactive form, and if everybody's in agreement, I will substitute that wording for, for what we had, okay? And thank Advantage Strategies for their help with that. We already talked about how we're going to deal with the legislative, um, excuse me, the education section, and I'll scroll through here. Again, please, please go back and look at, after, after all of our items on education, there's some suggestions that Advantage Strategies had made back in July after the, the previous session. And so just, just want to make sure we're all familiar with that and understand where those items may be at this point. And that, of course, includes the legislation that was carried over. Oh, I'm sorry, the one thing, just want to make sure. We've received a number of communications regarding support for women's rights. And so on this section under community policy, the second paragraph, we had, "The city supports legislation to promote health care for all Virginians, including reproductive health care, free from discrimination based on sex, race, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and gender identity." And what I've suggested is that we insert the words reproductive health care for women. Do we think that addresses that?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, they've, they've sent a lot of background information, but we try to keep these policy statements, you know, pretty succinct and to the point, so I think everybody would understand what that means. I just want to...
Thank you for including that, because, yeah, this, this is something that we, we've all heard a lot of comment on.
Exactly.
And I'm glad it's spelled out.
Yes, sir.
I would just add that I think because of the whole of that statement, I knew, I know one of the new phrases being used, which accurately reflects the transgender community, is birthing persons. But I think because we've included sexual orientation or gender identity here, it covers everything.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, I think you're right. So Councilmember Moon Reynolds provided me this morning with the, the proposed legislative programs in VML. I, I hope they have this on their website so I can get an electronic version and not...
Yes.
I'm, I'm trying to avoid making my files thicker than they already are, so I'll look for that. But we always put the statement in here about endorsing and supporting their legislative program and policy committee statements, as well as the Virginia School Boards Association Legislative Priorities. And we, we can add to that if everyone is in agreement, the state, I forget the name, Virginia State Chiefs of Police Association, we'll add that in as well. Is that all right?
Yes.
Okay. Then finally, let me make sure I have... We have this request from Barbara Durk that she sent. This is the last couple pages of the whole packet. It seems to me that we're, we're really already doing the things that she suggested. It's already part of our process and procedures moving forward in terms of, of street, street repaving or whatever. We add bicycle lanes wherever we can and that sort of thing. The legislation to require bicyclists to yield rather than full stop at a stop sign I just, personally, I, I, I think we're, that's a little shaky, because I think if we're going to say, if you're riding a bicycle on the public streets, you need to follow the same traffic requirements as any other vehicle out there, then we shouldn't start chipping away at that. Does that make sense? I mean, you know, if, if the, if the sign says stop, you need to stop. So...
And she also says, Mr. Bestbitch, she didn't know the position of North City Sheriff for the release, and we would certainly want their input before we discuss it any further, I would think.
Yeah, I mean, we certainly support continued funding for trails. So, anyway, we're okay with that?
Yeah.
So I'll ask if our partners at Advantage Strategies have additional comments they would like to share with us at this point. Ron? You got to unmute.
I know, I had to, had to move, had to move my text box away from the mute button so I could see it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And we, a couple of things that we would, observations is, one, as we, as we go forward, suggestions, this is mainly about form and format, is that when we send it to the General Assembly members, we would suggest, you know, we take the specific language that, that's been drafted out, let's tighten it up a little bit, so it just focuses on the, on the statements, the position statements themselves. We'll, we can, we will, we will obviously provide them with the draft, drafting that's been done, but, but in term, but it just makes, adding all that language just makes the document much more, much longer than it actually really is. So that's a, a form kind of thing. We also have some more suggestions as, as you, as you guys work through this. We'll have some editing, some, that we'd like to do to tighten up some statements and stuff like that on the form side. On a, a couple of other things, and we noticed that there are several things in here that duplicate what's in, they're also in the VML package and the chief's package and, and such. It may be appropriate to, for you to think about approaching it this way, is list, keep those items listed like you do, note that they're in the chief's package and, but also note that they're in the chief's package, and you support the chief's efforts on this or VML's efforts on this, since they'll be taking the lead on it.
Right, right. Well, if you could go ahead and send us any edits that you, you recommend for what we have at this point.
Sure.
Ms. Bateman, Ms. Burch, do you have anything further?
Laura, Kathy?
Um, I would just add that I had some, some late information from the Virginia Department of Housing and Community Development regarding the smoke alarm issue.
Oh, right.
According to them, they feel like localities already have that authority to require the smoke alarms and, and multifamily dwelling units. I'm going to, that's the only thing, and I want to talk to your code official who put this in again and see if this answers the questions, because no need in including this if it's already taken care of. I don't know that that's the case, but there's some further coordination there. And then also had some comments that came in, and I did talk to the department chair about this, the, the item on the publishing of legal notices in the newspaper. I, I just added that there's, there's been a, a study through with the local government attorneys, and they were looking at more effective public notice requirements. We know newspapers are, are in the sort of fight of their lives, if you will, in a changing economy, but they're doing everything they can to, you know, keep their space. And so there's been a work group trying to look at a reasonable compromise, and it sounds like they might have hit on one. And so I, we just have some language to restate that item and, and think that it would work. And the head of the department who put it, who put it in thought that it hit the mark too. And I'm sorry I haven't gotten it to you sooner, but we'd like to get those edits to you as well.
Yeah, that's, that's great. As we mentioned at the meeting a month ago, you know, one of the concerns is the way it's written, we have to pay whatever they want to charge. I mean, there's, there's really no limit on, on what they can, they can charge for that, and, and we just have to pay it. So if you could send that to us in the next couple of weeks or so, that would be great.
You got it.
Anything further? Ms. Burch, I don't want to neglect you if you...
Mr. Chairman, it was great to be with you this morning. I would echo Mr. Jordan's comments around IDing some, some other legislative programs or priorities that are broader across the Commonwealth, including, and, and Dr. Seibert referenced those, some of the items, particularly in the, in the public school side, where we could turn the language you all are looking for to support positions and let others, kind of coalition, broader coalitions, lead that. But again, we're working on those edits, and we'll get those to you as soon as possible.
Thank you, appreciate that. And I'll, and I will share that with everybody as soon as I have a chance to take a look at, at what you have. Okay?
One other thing, I, I just, I feel like I'd be remiss if, if we, if we didn't mention it. The city had a great success last session around all coming together around an economic development project, and that's the biotech, the Fraelen biotech. Very, very successful for the city and the region. So I, I think this is items around workforce development and career and educational training in terms of a specific sort of Roanoke and Roanoke region ask would be very well received.
Okay, is that something that we would include in the education packet or put into our? Why, why don't you send us some, some suggestions on how we could, how we could insert that?
Well, you're, you're, I was going to say, you, you might want to talk to Mark and your economic development folks, they may have some thoughts on that, too.
Okay, all right. I appreciate whatever you can, you can forward to us then.
Okay.
If there's nothing further, other business to come before the committee? Mr. Kathy, did you want to make a comment?
No, thank you, sir. I just really appreciate the ability to, to participate remotely. And I tell you, your IT people need to be commanded to have a great view of the whole room. It, it's really a phenomenally, the technology is very, very well done, and thank you again.
You're very welcome, and I appreciate you taking the time to, to squeeze in what, what time you can for us this morning.
Lucas is hand up.
Sure.
Thank you, Chairman Bestbitch. I'd just like to remind everyone regarding the charter change for changing municipal elections, that did receive 21 votes in the General Assembly last year. It does require a two-thirds threshold, which is 27.
Right.
We had one Republican who caucused with the Democrats, one Democrat was absent, but you will need to find five other Republicans to caucus with in order for it to pass.
Thank you, thank you. I'm sure Advantage will help us with that to whatever extent that they can. And I'll just say...
Chairman, if I could, I think the, the, the source of the opposition has been, has made itself known to the council on a couple of occasions.
I'm very aware.
Well, and, and as I said before, what, what, what the senator has shared with me is that he thinks that there is still a possibility that the General Assembly will not require every locality to hold their election in one, at one time or another, but will pass legislation that essentially says, you go back to whatever your charter says, whatever your charter says. And that legislation would not require a supermajority, a simple majority. Would, would... A simple majority would decide that. So what I was suggesting here is that this makes the election for the General Assembly next year extremely important, extremely important. So I just want everybody to keep that in mind. Thank you again, everyone. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to just say again that it's good to see Mr. Jordan there. Every time I see him, I think about the many years we worked together with the Department of Corrections and some of the people, and I've been, was in many meetings with Gene Johnson, would tell us, Ron, about your role and how important it was. So it's good to see you still.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. Back to the future for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to note that it's 9:45, so we completed our committee meeting this morning in about 40 minutes, rather than going on for an hour and a half or so as we had to the last month. So I appreciate everybody keeping up with this and looking at it as we move forward and letting us know if there are anything that you think we should add, should delete, or should revise the wording in any way. So please continue to look at that and send those suggestions before our meeting on the 7th of November, okay? With that, the committee is adjourned, and I turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Lisa, for your work and what we've done. And so with that, council, we'll meet in, we'll stand in recess for a closed meeting, and we'll reconvene here at 2:00 p.m. for our regular afternoon session. Thank you all so much.
Thank you, Ms. Crook.